Proclamations, and I have one. North Shore University Health Systems Day. Whereas North Shore University Health Systems graciously granted Friends of Evanston Farmer’s Markets, an independent nonprofit organization of volunteers, $5,000 to provide financial incentives to link cardholders, and whereas at the downtown Saturday Farmer’s Market, the users of linked cards received matching dollars to shop, and whereas with the help of the grant from North Shore University Health Systems, link card users spent $11,982 at the Farmer’s Market in 2011 compared to $2,000 with no grant in 2010, and whereas this important grant helps to provide healthy food to Evanston’s lower-income residents. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdale, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim January 9th, 2012, as North Shore University Health System Day in the City of Evanston as recognition and thanks for working towards providing healthy food to Evanston’s link-cardholder residents while simultaneously helping Evanston’s local economy. Would Mark Schroeder and the folks from the -- Vicki and who else is here? Sean, please come up.
And Ann McManus, too?
Ann McManus.
All right. Would everyone who’s here for this please come up? Here you go. Wow.
Okay.
There you go, Sean.
Thank you all very much. That’s terrific. Thank you.
It was our privilege to embark on this pioneering program this year. As you know, we get lots of requests, and this is a great example of how health goes far beyond hospitals and doctors’ offices. And I am most pleased to inform you that we will again offer a $5,000 grant to the Farmer’s Market for the 2012 season. So it feels like spring. It feels like the right day to say that.
Okay. And we graciously accept that. This was our first year with Friends of Evanston Farmer’s Markets, and with our request to the hospital, we were thrilled to be able to partner with the hospital in doing this work. It’s a wonderful thing when we can provide healthy food. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Manager, do you have public announcements? Oh, and I forgot to say one thing. Hello to Alderman Rainey, who’s watching us.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening and Happy New Year. I’d like to ask Jim Mayworm, our Super China Streets and Sanitation, to come up. As you know, we’re coming up on a holiday next week for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, so that will have an impact on trash collections, and he’s also going to say a little bit about our Christmas tree collection program. Mr. Mayworm, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, I did want to remind everybody that January 16th, in observance of Martin Luther King’s birthday, there will be no trash collections on that Monday. Most of the collections and recycling will be one day delayed. However, the condo garbage and recycling collections will return to their normal schedule on Thursday. We’re able to accommodate that. And I also wanted to mention that right now through January 23rd, City of Evanston crews are out picking up holiday trees. Please have your holiday trees on the parkways. Please have the holiday lights and ornaments and everything off of the trees, and please do not put the trees in plastic bags as those trees are being chipped. Collection of those trees would occur at the same time that your normal trash collection would occur. So thank you very much. I just wanted to make those announcements.
Great. Thank you. And if anybody has any questions, they can call 311. Also, I’d like to mention the City of Evanston’s Day of Celebration Honoring the Legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. will take place beginning at noon on Saturday, January 14th, at the Fleetwood Jordane Center at 1655 Foster Street. The mission is free. The afternoon will feature music, dance, and excerpts from Dr. King’s speeches. Guests will include Alderman Holmes, Reverend Kat Cherry, and former Evanston Mayor Lorraine Morton. This year’s special guest is you and me this morning personality, Jeannie Sparrow from WCIU Channel 26. So that is happening on Saturday, January 14th. Residents can also go to our website at cityofevanston.org, where there’s a full listing of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day events being sponsored by various organizations throughout the community. People can find that listing there. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two communications to give this evening. I received a letter from the Office of Cook County Clerk David Orr stating that they have finished the redistricting of the congressional, legislative, senatorial, and board review districts. As you know, that there were -- some of the precincts were eliminated. We lost precincts in every ward except for Ward 9. We lost two in Ward 4, two precincts that is. One precinct in 5, one precinct -- two precincts in 7, I mean in 3. Three precincts in Ward 4, one precinct in 5. Two precincts in Ward 6, one precinct in Ward 7, and two precincts in Ward 8. I will have a list of all of the -- 2 and 1.
Ward 1 is 2.
And Ward 2, you lost 1. I do have a list -- we’ll have a list of all of the polling places and where you’ll be going to vote for this coming election. We’ll also have it up on our website. The other thing, too, is I received quite a few calls about -- geez -- about the township. To make one statement clear, the clerk does not have a vote on any resolution that goes forward, but I am supposed to do all the dictates and responsibilities that are given to me by the state, and also any other tasks that the council deems necessary to abide by the ordinances and resolutions of the city. There were calls that were given. People are asking how they can get rid of the referendum that may be on the ballot. The only way you can do that is vote yes or no, or from what Colleen Gleason said, a letter to withdraw the referendum can be submitted. I’ll give you more information once I get more from them. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. Each speaker has three minutes. I’m going to call the first four speakers up, and please speak at the microphones there or there. Junad Riske, Kevin O’Connor, Jeff Hill, and Mary Baker. And if you would give your name and address, that would be helpful.
Tonight I will speak to the city raising its debt limit. For the majority of council members, I think this might be a no-brainer. That is, vote yes on the consent agenda because there are more important issues. It amuses me really that the council will probably spend hours talking about a $1.3 million township budget and will approve a $30 million debt increase in 30 seconds. Most of you really should be embarrassed, but I guess to be embarrassed, one would have to understand what’s going on here, and I agree, it’s rather difficult to understand what’s going on here. The city is in really quite big trouble. Recently Moody’s downgraded the state, and Evanston’s debt load is even higher than really is shown in the memorandums the city’s showing because they didn’t add the pension liability in there. Not so long ago, Wally was really claiming the city was in trouble, and he did not want to borrow more money, but he was going to cannibalize operating funds to do any more borrowing, and now we’re going to borrow 30 million more. This overspending is really quite a misrepresentation. As I’ve stated before here, the capital planning process is such a mess, it’s hard to really add or account to where this capital or money that will be borrowed will be shown in the capital. You cannot track it. It’s extremely difficult and unclear. The other issue that I have seen here is the city is basically taking $3 million out of the water fund, putting it into the general fund, and that’s money that -- and it also took $4 million out of the sewer fund and transferred it to the parking fund. These things really are on the financial report. It’s no secret. But then the city wants to borrow more capital for sewer improvements, which really means the water rate payers here are paying for this. It’s a shell game. It’s really quite unfortunate. And the problem is, this has been going on for quite a while. I believe over 20 to 30 miles of water pipe probably could have been replaced with all the money that’s been transferred out of these funds, and then asking the water rate payers to pay for this. I think it was stated that the structural budgetary problems have been solved here. That just isn’t true. It’s some very serious problems. I think we’re playing the same game that I think a lot of people are playing, the tollways, Commonwealth Edison, and other -- some of these other private-public monopolies that are basically asking for more and more capital. And we all know that this capital is not going to be used for capital improvements but for operating. In some fairness to the current city manager, he inherited this mess and years of problems here, and there are no real easy answers to fix this. But we recently had an 8% basically property tax increase, so we’re not in good shape, and this is getting, I think, is quite real. The real question I think this council should ask is where will this $30 million go? And there needs to be accountability that none of this money go to operating, but it is used for capital.
Mr. Riske, I need you to wrap up.
All right, that’s fine. That’s my last statement. Basically, just make sure if you’re going to borrow money, that you’re telling the public it’s for capital, that it goes for capital, and it’s not switched to operating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin O’Connor, 1227 and 1/2 Isabella. Agenda item A4 proposes raising the city’s tax-supported general obligation debt limit from $90 million to $120 million, an increase of 33 1/3 percent. Curiously, in the packet, page 118 under Funding Source, it says “NA” or “Not Available.” Really? The Funding Source, of course, is the taxpayers paying for more debt when we can’t support the debt we have already. On page 119, the city states, quote, “We do not project that the city will go over the new proposed limit,” end quote. Gosh, let’s hope not, since the new debt limit or the new limit for debt includes $17 million in property tax-supported debt in support of the sewer fund. Ominously, this leaves $13 million more to potentially saddle the taxpayers with in the future. Agenda item A4 and page 121 show debt-to-EAV ratio. That’s irrelevant due to the fact that EAV, or equalized assessed value, is a relative number and has no paper value. The tragic and shameful chart on page 122 shows that for the past 20 years, total general obligation debt has increased 181 percent, other debt has increased 155 percent, and total debt has increased 171 percent. The fiscal irresponsibility and damage done by our elected officials over the last 20 years is plain to see, yet no ownership is ever taken. With the pension liabilities added, we’re beyond bankrupt, so let the reality be reflected by filing for bankruptcy as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I’m here -- my name’s Jeff Hill. I’m representing World Market Stores, including the one here in Evanston on Maple Street. I’m here in regards to A10, the amendment on ordinance 9-0-12. And what I wanted to do is just make a couple comments prior to the discussion of approval of the amendments. I did bring a representation of our six-pack carriers. This is from our World Market Stores. From the inception of this store, including all of our stores, we do create a gift pack -- create a six-pack area. And within that area is that we actually do sell individual beers. Within the ordinances, they are required to fill the six-pack. The cost is at $11.94, which is substantially higher than if it’s from a packaged distributor. Also, in addition to this, is that as a company, we do not refrigerate any of our alcoholic products. So we’re very conscientious in awareness of, you know, consumption for immediate -- or sales for immediate consumption, and that’s why we don’t refrigerate any of our product that’s alcoholic, including the six-packs and including the build-your-own six-packs. In addition, you know, I just, prior to, you know, taking this to a vote, I did want to make sure that it is understood. It is part of our marketing program. We do appeal to where we do tab inserts, and in regards to this particular program, this would be the only store within the state of Illinois which we would not be able to include within that marketing plan. So again, it’s something that we’ve had very positive customer response from the time that we opened the store, and like I said, I would just opt to have you really consider whether or not we can continue doing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Baker?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. I followed up in reference to the possible dissolving of the Township of Evanston, and in doing so, I found a few surprises. One was is that the decision had already been made for us and was sent to David Orr’s office to go ahead and be put on the voting ballot. I never knew anything about it. When I was here on the December 5 meeting, I never heard any discussion, nor did I hear a vote on it. I do know at one point on the December 5 meeting that it was communicated that all of you in the front should be speaking into your mics so everyone can hear you, and I kept saying, “I can’t hear what they’re saying. What are they saying? What’s going on?” So finally, different ones started speaking into their mics, and we had, at that point, people were taking turns coming up and voicing their opinions. Everyone that I heard speak were against dissolving the Township of Evanston for various reasons. I spoke with Mr. Green. I was one of the people who called him, and I was -- and I spoke to David Orr’s office, and I spoke with Ms. Gleason, and I gave her some specifics because I think it’s always good to give as much information as possible. And so then the conclusion was problem-solution. I did not see that the proper procedure was followed by our aldermen and alderwomen, mayor, city manager, whoever was involved, and made the decision to go ahead and make it a referendum, a resolution, whatever the correct terminology is, and then to go ahead and send it into David Orr’s office to have it put on the voting ballot. So she then told me that the only solution would be that the city clerk who had notarized it and sent it in could write a letter stating that he was withdrawing that very thing. So I called Mr. Green back again, and I asked if he would write such letter and present it to all of you, because I think fair is fair. Even though you all went behind our backs and made a decision and went and did something, you know, we don’t -- I don’t work that way. So I asked him to write a -- to compose a letter, to present it to you, and then to send it in.
Ms. Baker, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. So it’s my understanding that if you don’t follow the procedure, I mean, is that like breaking the law? Or can you, as representatives of our city, aldermen, alderwomen, mayor, city manager, whoever was part of making the decision, I believe all voted yes except for three. Thank you for the three that voted no. And I mean, so I have contacted other people as well to find out what we can do to not have it on the ballot because proper procedure was not followed. It’s my understanding -- well, you all -- you know what proper procedure was supposed to follow.
Ms. Baker, I really do need you to wrap up.
Right. Okay. So I don’t have to remind you, although you were reminded in the November meeting by Mr. Green. I read the minutes. It hasn’t been okayed yet, so forth, but you went ahead and did what you wanted anyway. So I say, okay, so the conclusion is the Township of Evanston is very important to the City of Evanston, to the Evanston residents, and if I had more time, I could give you many reasons why that is the case. And I don’t think it’s any coincidence that you’re trying to dissolve the Township of Evanston, whereas months earlier, you were trying to dissolve the Parks and Recreation Department offices because you wanted that money to do with what you want with. But then a month later, you decide, okay, we’re not going to do that.
Baker.
So for some reason, you want to close, and you’re choosing us now.
Ms. Baker, I really do need you to --
Okay. So for some reason, you’ve chosen us now, and maybe because, you know, the Township of Evanston General Assistance, Emergency Assistance deals with the poor, and we may not have as many resources. We do have brains. We do have mouths, and we will be asking for help. And if you choose to allow Mr. Green to write the letter, to withdraw what was sent in, then the problem will be solved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Betty Esther, Bonnie Wilson, Padma Rao, and BK Rao.
I have one question. I asked to pre-put on the agenda, but dissolve the Township of Evanston, that’s supposed to be part of the agenda. So is it coming up later as part of the agenda?
It was on the agenda, and there was, as you referenced, a vote that was public. I’m sorry, we’re done. It’s now Ms. Esther’s turn.
No, I just need to know about staying if it’s still going to be on the agenda.
Mr. Farrar, maybe you could talk with her.
I stay at 2130 Church Street, 2031 Church Street. At the AP&amp;W meeting, I raised issue about A12-1 and A12-2. I want to thank the staff for giving the information as to what was done in the CBBG Committee and the Economic Development Committee, the work that they had done to pull together the sale of 1817 Church Street. That was really helpful. The only thing was that it was done in the committee. They did their job. They did it great. But we was promised and told that we were supposed to have a community meeting. In my definition and understanding of a community meeting is that the meeting is brought out to the people in the community. If I’m wrong and have been wrong these numbers, 18 years, that’s how old I am, then I’m sorry. But community means the community people. Like the young lady spoke early about the General Assistance, we have the information and we read everything. We have one department trying to do the job of another department. No training, no expertise, no nothing. You look at that budget and you look at things disappearing. What happened to the people that the organization has served many years have a balanced budget with a small amount of money? They have been serving their constituents well. So why would we want to vote yes to give it to somebody that cannot come to the community and have a meeting? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, trustees and aldermen. I’m Bonnie Wilson, Evanston Township Assessor. I’m just going over a memo that was sent to the mayor and members of the city council on January 4th from the staff regarding the referendums, the education of the referendums, both the binding referendum and the advisory referendum. And I’m concerned that, one, I didn’t know about this memo. It was never sent to me or Patricia Vance, and that’s why she isn’t here tonight, because she was not informed of this memo or of the item on the agenda. Also, there were three or four, five ideas on how you’re going to educate the public or the voters on this, on these referendums, and I just want to know if the -- if myself and Patricia Vance are going to be informed of the meetings that are going to be coming up, and if we are going to have input on these meetings to give our side of why it’s important to continue with the township. And also, you are going to have a webpage and videos. Are we going to be able -- is Supervisor Vance and myself going to be able to give input on all those, on the videos and the websites to give our opinions on information on the township and what we do and how we do things and how we help the citizens of Evanston? So that’s my question tonight when you discuss this referendum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments have been reviewed and approved by my attorney. We oppose this council’s vote at Kendall to needlessly sentence over two dozen mature trees to death and endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. This council refuses to address the issues. Instead, two of your members, your mayor and your lawyer, repeatedly attack us and violate our constitutional right to state our concerns. It is well-settled law that speaker and viewpoint-based discrimination offend the Constitution. The video for your last meeting shows that partway through my comments, the microphone was muted for no apparent reason. The volume was restored only after my comments concluded. In light of the pattern already evident in this matter, my attorney suspects that this could be yet another violation of our First Amendment rights. Restating what was muted last time, the U.S. Supreme Court’s opinion in Nevada Commission on Ethics versus Kerrigan is on point. The High Court condemned Kerrigan’s conduct, which was less egregious than that of your first ward member, given that Kerrigan was not reported to have made assurances that the taxpayers would be ignored, no matter what concerns they raised. The High Court held that as a council member, Kerrigan was prohibited from advocating for or voting on a project when the developer hired Kerrigan’s friend and campaign manager as a consultant on the same project. In light of this ruling, how can your first ward member advocate and vote on the Kendall Project when the developer hired her son’s law firm for the same project? I submit that the alleged approval of this matter by the city’s ethics entity appears to be a sham, and I challenge said entity to come forward with the complete written brief upon which it relied to decide this issue, including findings of fact and application of law to facts. Only then can the taxpayers know whether the right questions were asked or not and whether the right questions were answered or not. The U.S. Supreme Court’s opinion in Brown versus Entertainment Merchants Association reiterates that the Constitution forbids government from infringing on First Amendment rights on the basis of aesthetic and moral judgments. Your lawyer repeatedly invokes decorum as an excuse for the mayor to interfere with our constitutional right to state our concerns about official conduct that affects taxpayers. But decorum is precisely the type of aesthetic judgment that the High Court held to be forbidden by the Constitution in the Brown case. by the Constitution in the Brown case. If this council does not want to hear criticism, then it should not offend taxpayers by ignoring their concerns and violating their constitutional rights. Protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall. Until you do so, I'll see you all next time.
My comments were reviewed and approved by my attorney. They relate to the Kendall re-subdivision. That plan involves killing over 24 mature trees that are part of the city's history. It also poses safety risks because of an alley configuration that dumps traffic onto narrow Colfax Street. Instead of addressing a single concern, your first ward member pushed the project and the rest of you voted with no discussion. We exercised our right to speak about these issues, and we were repeatedly interrupted by the mayor, who even used the city's lawyer to try to silence my daughter during her exercise of First Amendment rights. I submit that the unprofessional toying of this particular staff member to please his mayor should earn him a different title. Your first ward member makes one excuse after another for her actions and attacks us for stating fact-supported concerns. The person from the eighth ward demands that we should not be allowed to speak solely for the arbitrary reason that she has respect for her colleague from the first ward. Why do the rest of the silent seven say and do nothing about the actions of these individuals who, in my opinion, trample the exercise of constitutional rights and encourage bullying buffoonery? Among the silent seven, three are lawyers and the other four are well-educated. Do I have to remind you that taxpayers have the right to speak during citizen comment without being attacked, interrupted, or contradicted by any public official or bully boy employee? Do I have to remind you that killing 24 trees in a small area poses environmental problems? Do I have to remind you that when traffic dumps into a narrow street, it creates safety hazards for pedestrians in general and children in particular? There is one more thing that is not going to go away, the issue of double representation by Holland and Knight. You paid that firm a lot of tax money. Then, the developer's lawyer stated that they hired the same firm to save the city. Without questioning, verifying, and demanding an explanation from Holland and Knight, our city staff, the council caved in to the threat in a display of sniveling cowardice, unworthy of the expectations of Evanston's electorate. Do I have to remind you that if you choose to be the silent seven, you are affirmatively choosing to join the ranks of public officials who have betrayed the voter's trust? Do I have to remind you there will be a reckoning at the polls? It's a new year, think clearly and act correctly. I will return.
Thank you. Priscilla Giles is next.
I am Priscilla Giles, I live at 1829 Ashland in Evanston, and I have several points to make today. I was told that one of the people who has been struggling to get over the curb at Fleetwood Jordan has passed, and so, that's one more, one less person that is able to speak a voice for the non-existent driveway, for the people who are on canes, on walkers and wheelchairs, and not able to reach the door easily. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the dissolution of the, well, the disappointment that I have in the Evanston 150 that did not even make it to the table for the low-income, the poor, the elderly, and the veterans coming home, did not even make it to the table, the Evanston 150, and that the subject of the dissolution of the Evanston Township is even brought, not even brought to the table, is a slap in the face, it's a disgrace to the city of Evanston. When after World War II, if Evanston, if you can remember, housing was made for the veterans, and now, that same land is being developed for boating on the canal. It seems that Evanston has forgotten the poor, the low-income, the elderly, the disabled, and are planning to have the canal as something for the rich, near-rich. And this is, the dissolution will only add to the unemployment and the poor in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. City Manager, next issue is Special Orders of Business Outreach for the March 20th, 2012 ballot initiatives.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, in your pack, you have a memorandum from Mrs. Hurley and Mr. Swankowski outlining some ideas that we have regarding outreach for the two ballot initiatives that will be on the March 20th ballot. One, of course, being regarding the advisory vote on pursuing the dissolution of Evanston Township, the other regarding community choice electric aggregation. We're proposing that there would be two community meetings held in the community. I'm sorry that those dates are not on the agenda packet, but Mrs. Hurley or Mr. Swankowski can get up, we've, I think we're looking for the availability of city facilities, but we're proposing that we would have two community meetings, as well as also suggesting other ideas to continue to have information on the city's website, to make written materials available, as well as participate in any ward meetings. I think it's important to remind the City Council that under Illinois law, the city is not able to use taxpayer dollars to advocate one way or another for the initiative, but merely to provide information to the community. Mr. Swankowski, what were the dates that we had identified?
Matt Swankowski, intergovernmental affairs coordinator. February 23rd will be at Robert Crown from 7:00 until 8:00 p.m., and then, March 8th at Fleetwood Jordan Center, same time, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Or 9:00.
Or 9:00, yeah, 7:00. Starting, beginning at 7:00.
So, those are two dates we have vetted on the city calendar where there are no competing meetings. Again, we're here this evening to get direction from the council, if that seems appropriate, if there's other outreach that you think is appropriate, if you could give that direction, otherwise, we'll move forward to do that.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I guess the assessor raises a good point. I have concerns and reservations that the information be presented in a, in a completely neutral fashion, and based on your comments, I assume that's the intention, but how do we accomplish that, given the fact that there's been basically vocal support from the trustees to undertake this? And their suggestion is to have these meetings at the ward meetings. I guess, how's it going to be scripted? I'm very uncomfortable with it, because I, you know, one meeting that has a person or a staff member or an alderman say, this is a great thing, we have to do this, and you've blown the whole thing out of the water.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Wilson, certainly, we planned to script this carefully. There are two staff members assigned, only two staff members assigned, Mr. Swankowski and Mrs. Hurley, to deal with both of these issues. We've been in touch with the Law Department, we will continue to be in touch with the Law Department. We would intend to stick very closely to the script. One of the reasons we're here this evening is to get a sense of the scope. We think that while we want to get the information out, we want to be mindful that getting too far afield, it does exactly, I think, what you're concerned about, is that perhaps endangers us for the message being something beyond what Illinois law allows for. So, we plan, I think we have systems in place that we'll be able to keep the wording very carefully scripted. We will review with the city attorney the presentations, and I think we'll be able to accomplish that.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think my concern is that the first meeting isn't until February 23rd, and there is clearly anxiety in the community about at least the township referendum question, and if it's possible to convene a community meeting sooner than February 23rd, which is, you know, still six weeks from now and only a month ahead of the actual election. I'd like there to be a little more room to play with, so that if we need more meetings, that we can schedule more informational meetings, whether they're ward meetings or formal informational meetings.
And Alderman Grover, members of the council, we certainly can do that. Looking at the, the city's calendar, there are five Mondays, excuse me, I stand corrected. Yes, there are five Mondays in June, so we would have a fifth Monday available in the city calendar on, excuse me, January, on January 30th. For example, we could have an additional meeting the week of January 30th, and then, if you wish, we could add a, a fourth meeting sometime during the first part of the month of February, if not on a Monday, another night of the week. So, again, we're looking for direction from the council.
I'm guessing that part of this information will be the presentation that we haven't yet heard about what it would mean for the city to assume some of the duties and responsibilities of the township with regard to administering general assistance, emergency assistance, and taxpayer advocacy, and we haven't heard that, and so, there's this, there's this big expectation that there's information out there, and the sooner the better. And, and so, I'm assuming we don't have to retool a presentation, because it's already been worked up to some extent, and so, a date on, on January 30th, that Monday, would be not inconvenient for us to put together information. We could do it.
Absolutely.
Alderman Holmes?
Well, my question was, how soon would you be ready to go out to the community? Because I would, we'll have two ward meetings before your 23rd, February 23rd, one on the 19th of January, and then, one on the 16th of February. So, I would certainly like to have someone come. I just need to know how soon they'll be ready to.
And, and we'll be ready shortly. I think, again, we are here tonight to get general direction. You know, we're mindful of the scheduled ward meetings. You have, as you said, two, Alderman Fisk has one scheduled, Alderman Braithwaite, I think is getting into a, a new schedule of regular meetings in, in the new year, so we will try to be mindful of that. We'll be ready whenever you are.
Okay, well, will you be ready on the 19th?
We'll be ready on the 19th.
Okay, then, we'll put you down for the 19th. Oh, we'll invite any, our meetings are open to any and everyone. 7:00 o'clock at Fleetwood, yes.
And, and again, the expectation is we are going to explain the initiative, not advocating pro or con.
Absolutely.
And then.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Then, can I go ahead and get on the record for, I think it's the second Thursday of the month, and I don't have my calendar while you guys are here.
I don't know that we're ready, that would be this coming Thursday, the 12th.
Following, February 2nd.
We, we would be able to do February.
So, you will, or you will not?
Yes, we will. I, I, we have open calendars at this point, again, we weren't sure what the council's direction would be, so that's why we're here this evening, but we will come whenever we are needed.
Okay.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes, and the first ward meeting is the first Tuesday in March, which I think is the 6th. Okay, and everyone is invited to that as well. Could, could someone explain to me the wording and what the, what the wording, the proposed wording of the referendum? Yeah, I, I can, I can read it, but what, what does that mean, continue to pursue the issue of dissolving Evanston Township? Does that mean more discussion? Does that, what, what action does that suggest?
I, I think Alderman Fisk, members of the council, through the discussions that the, that the township trustees had in the City Council had, was, was not specifically defined. I think it was certainly a component dealing with the Illinois General Assembly. As you know, we have made a request through Senator Schoenberg of Attorney General Madigan for some comment, which we have not yet heard. There was a separate motion passed regarding pursuing legislation in Springfield, so that is something that we will continue to do if the referendum is successful, all those efforts will continue to move forward. If those referendum is not successful, then those would stop, and we would not continue to do that. So, there's a trajectory that, that we're on at this point, and if the, if there's positive decisions from the voters of Evanston, then I believe that the council and the Township Board will talk further about what appropriate next steps would be then.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is a council discussion right now. City Manager, would you be able to, if we're going to rely heavily on ward meetings, to publicize and explain this issue, could we get some extra publicity listing all the ward meetings at which this will be discussed?
Certainly.
Yes, including informing Patricia Vance and Bonnie Wilson.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm sorry, the time for public comments is over.
I don't have a comment. I have the fact, I need to state the fact that I spoke with Kate Todd, asking her to put on the agenda for tonight, discussion of the dissolution of the township of Evanston.
Thank you very much, but the City Council needs to be discussing this now.
Okay, and she said she would put it on the agenda, and it looks as though it's now become a part of the discussion for the ballot and the township of dissolution, so.
It is a discussion to explain the issue before the ballot. I really need you to sit down, please, the time for public comments is over.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything further?
I do, I, I have my, I thought I put my.
I'm sorry, it's not on.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Holmes?
I just needed to know, in terms of the ward meetings, City Manager, will the staff be prepared to talk about the electricity issue as well as the township, so we'll do both? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
When I write my agenda out, okay.
Our, our plan is that we will not talk about one issue, we will talk about two issues.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, now, still seeing no, no lights, does anyone have anything more you want to say on this issue? Alderman Wilson?
I was just going to mention, I plan to have a ward meeting in February, but I do not intend to discuss, I don't think it's safe to do this at the ward meetings in this context, so I encourage everyone to look to the other sources and resources for information. And there's nothing that precludes private citizens from advocating their positions either, independently of the, of the government.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any further comments? All right, City Manager, do you have the direction you need?
I'd like to repeat what I believe my direction is and have.
Go right ahead.
The council confirm. We will have three community meetings on January the 30th, February the 23rd, and March the 8th. Perhaps we can have the January 30th meeting here, so we'll just go ahead and plan to have that here at the Civic Center, February 23rd, the Robert Crown Center, and March 8th, the Fleetwood Jordan Center. We will post a list of all the ward meetings that we will make presentations at. This will be a, a presentation made by pretty much just three staff members, myself, Mr. Swankowski, and Mrs. Hurley. Between the three of us, we will, we will cover all of the meetings to ensure that the message is carefully scripted and that we are in compliance with Illinois law, to ensure that, that we are informing the residents of Evanston on this issue, not advocating on behalf of it. So, we will have PowerPoint presentation, I would imagine, we have the one that was created that we did not present to the council and township boards, so that'll be the basis of the presentation regarding the township. Mrs. Hurley did a presentation to the council on electric aggregation, which we'll use. We'll make those presentations, we'll be very careful in our question answering, we'll have information on the website, and we'll move forward in that. So, that's my understanding of the direction from the council.
Does that make sense to everyone? Hearing no objections, I think, I think that's correct. All right, Alderman, when could we have the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On the consent agenda, first we have item M1, approval of revised minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 28th, 2011. Item M2, approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 12th, 2011. Under Administration and Public Works Committee, we have A1, City of Evanston payroll through 2012 for 11, in the amount of $2,488,703.24. City of Evanston payroll through 121811, $2,483,492.13. Item A2, City of Evanston bills for fiscal year 2011 through January 10th, 2012, $6,779,309.55. City of Evanston bills for FY 2012 through January 10th, 2012, of $42,948.59. Credit card activity, a period ending November 30th, 2011, of $88,663.55. Item A 3.1, approval of renewal of building automation service agreement with Schneider Electric for 2012. Staff recommends approval of the service agreement with Schneider Electric, formerly ITG Solutions, in the amount of $23,184 for fiscal year 2012 to cover hardware, software, and service visits at eight city facilities. This is for action tonight. Item 3.2, approval of Amendment 3 to the agreement with Twin Eagle Resources Management LLC for the purchase of natural gas for 16 city-owned buildings. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute this amendment for the purchase of natural gas for 16 city-owned buildings. The amendment term of the agreement shall be effective from September 1st, 2013 through August 31st, 2014. This is for action tonight. Item A4 is off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Item A5 is also off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Item A6, Ordinance 2-0-12 authorizing the sale of Evanston Police Department K-9 program dog. This is recommended adoption of this ordinance, staff recommends adoption of this ordinance to authorize the sale of our K-9 program dog to his handler, Officer Scheinbim. Chief Eddington recommends that the ordinance be introduced and adopted on January, tonight, due to the nature of the transaction. Suspension of the rules is requested for introduction and action for tonight. Item A7, Ordinance 3-0-12 amending Section 7-2-6 of the City Code to enact regulations for moving vehicles and storage containers on public ways. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance by which the city council would amend Section 7.2, 7-2-6, and which establishes the process to reserve parking space in the right of way to load and unload moving vans and containers. This is for introduction. Item A8, Ordinance 4-0-12 amending portions of Title 10-12-2 to violation of the Illinois Vehicle Code relating to seat belt use. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance, amending Evanston City Code Title 10-12-2, making it a municipal violation for drivers and passengers to not use safety belts by making it unlawful for any person to violate 625 ILCS 5/12-603.1. This is for introduction. A9, Ordinance 8-0-12 adopting the Evanston City Code 2012. Staff recommends passage of this ordinance, adopting the Evanston City Code 2012. This is for introduction tonight. This is the newly revamped Evanston City Code, which our staff has been working on for quite a long time. Our, our city code is now completely cleaned up, and I urge anyone to visit our website and look at it. Item A10 is off the agenda, off the agenda, will be addressed by the committee chair. Item A11, Ordinance 10-0-12 amending Class S liquor license. Local liquor commissioner recommends the city council adopt this ordinance, which permits the sale of wine, beer, and alcoholic liquor in the package store area of a combination restaurant slash package store licensee. This is for introduction tonight. Item A 12.1, approval to reimburse the Department of Housing and Urban Development for fair market value of property located at 1817 Church Street. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to reimburse HUD $220,000 for, from the West Evanston TIF for the Community Development Block grant investment in 1817 Church Street per HUD regulations. This item was held in committee on December 12th. It is for action tonight. Item A 12.2, Resolution 64-R-11 authorizing the city manager to execute a TIF construction loan agreement for the renovation of 1817 Church Street. Staff requests adoption of this resolution, which authorizes the city manager to lend $200,000 from the West Evanston TIF District Fund to the North Evanston North Shore Contractors Cooperative LLC for the renovation of 1817 Church Street. This item is for action tonight. Item A 12.3, Ordinance 106-0-11 authorizing the city manager to negotiate the sale of 1817 Church Street. Staff requests the adoption of this ordinance, which authorizes the city manager to negotiate the sale of city-owned real, real property located, located at 1817 Church Street. This ordinance was introduced at the November 28th, 2011 city council meeting, held at the December 12th meeting, and it's for action tonight. Item A 12.4, Ordinance 107-0-11 authorizing the city manager to execute the sale of 1817 Church Street. Staff requests, requests adoption of this ordinance, which authorizes the city manager to execute a real estate contract for the sale of this property to Evanston North Shore Contractors Cooperative. This is for action tonight. A13, Ordinance 104-0-11 authorizing the sale of surplus fleet vehicles. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance, authorizing the city manager to sell various vehicles and equipment owned by the city through public auction. This item is for action tonight. A14, Ordinance 114-0-11 amending Title 10 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 11 Traffic Schedules, Section 12, Schedule 12 Parking Meter Zones. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance. These changes will impact all meter zones, including 20-minute, 30-minute, 2-hour, 3-hour, 4-hour, 12-hour, and 15-hour zones. This amendment will take effect on February 1st, 2012. This is for action tonight. A15, Ordinance 115-0-11 amending Title 10 Schedule 17 of the Evanston City Code Parking Violation Penalties, Section 10-11-17, increasing the penalty for various fines. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance. These changes and the initial fines take effect on April 1st, 2012. This is for action tonight. Item A16, Ordinance 117-0-11 amending various sections of Chapter 11 of Title 9 of the Evanston City Code regulating false alarm systems. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance, which would increase City of Evanston Police and Fire-related false alarm fees. This increase was included as a revenue enhancement item for the 2012 budget and will take effect on February 1st, 2012. This item is for action tonight. Planning and Development Committee, P1, Ordinance 6-0-12 granting a special use for a child daycare center at 1629 Orington Avenue. Zoning Board of Appeals and city staff recommend the adoption of this ordinance, granting a special use permit for the operation of a child daycare center by Bright Horizons Family Solutions at 1629 Orington Avenue. This is for introduction tonight. P2, Ordinance 7-0-12 amending Ordinance 77-0-11, 1100 Clark Street slash 1719 Ridge Avenue Plan Development. Focus Development has requested an amendment to the planned development approved by Ordinance 77-0-11 to allow for an extension of completion time from October 1st, 2013 to October 1st, 2014. Suspension of the rules is requested with respect to this item. Human Services Committee, H1, approval of Township of Evanston December 2011 Bills. Township Supervisor recommends approval of Township of Evanston expenditures for the month of December 2011 totaling $121,946.26. This is for action. H2, Ordinance 81-0-11 amending Title 9, Chapter 4, Dogs, Cats, Animals, and Fowl, to add a new section, Responsible Pet Ownership. The Human Services Committee recommends adoption of this ordinance as amended, which includes a new section, Responsible Pet Ownership, to address residents who repeatedly violate city ordinances regulating domestic animals. This is for introduction tonight. Under Economic Development Committee, O1, approval of the Chicago Dempster Merchants Association's application for the Evanston Great Merchants Grant Program. Staff and the EDC recommend city council approval of a great merchant grant in the amount of $9,000 to the Chicago Dempster Merchants Association for fiscal year 2012. This is for action tonight. O2, approval of the Dr. Hill Business Association's application for the Evanston Great Merchants Grant Program. Staff and EDC recommend council approval for a great merchant grant in the amount of $9,000 to the Dr. Hill Business Association for fiscal year 2012. This is for action tonight. O3, approval of the Evanston West Village Business Association's application for a great merchants grant. This grant is in the amount of $9,000. It's also for fiscal year 2012. O4, approval of the Howard Street Business Association's application for a great merchants grant program. This grant is in the amount of $7,000. It is also for action tonight. And finally, O5, approval of the Main Street Merchants Association's grant in the amount of $7,300. That's final for action tonight. And finally, under appointments, for reappointment to the Utilities Commission, David Grumman. That, Madam Mayor, concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, seeing no lights on for discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Eight, zero.
Eight to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Burris, Administration of Public Works, please.
A4, Resolution 1-R-12 amending the City of Evanston Budget Policy. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 1-R-12 amending the city's budget policy. The proposed resolution would increase the city's tax-supported general obligation, GO debt, limit from 90 million to 120 million. The tax-supported debt to equalized assessed value ratio in 2004 to 2005 was 5.21 percent compared to the proposed new debt limit ratio of 3.63 percent using the 2010-11EAV. Oh, I'm sorry, it was amended in committee from the 120 to 120 million down to 113 Why was it, sorry. It was amended in committee, there was much discussion about the notion of bringing the debt up much higher than it currently is. It was amended by Alderman Grover to bring it to 113, which would, according to the charts, would cover the debt that is expected over the next five years, is why was it?
No more.
And no more. I'm, believe I'm the only one that voted against it in AP&amp;W. I believe we're still, our debt ratio was still very high, and we need to stop borrowing as much.
All right, it's been moved. Why no, but there's no second? I'm asking for a second.
A second?
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I generally agree with Alderman Burris's comments. The numbers are arbitrary, the caps and the limits are arbitrary. Something could change. We could find ourselves in a position where we need to, you know, pay $10 million to fix something that falls apart or breaks that we're not aware of or prepared for. But to me, adjusting the number to fit where we're at, adjusting the number to fit where we want to be, again, it's just sort of a, I don't want to say it's a feel-good exercise, but in a lot of ways it might be that. The number that I, the only number that makes me start to feel better is our curve down. You know, you look at the chart, it's curving down. I want to keep it curving down and keep it curving down to get where, I think we can put ourselves into a, into more of a pay-as-you-go philosophy, and, and that's my goal. So those are my comments on the proposal.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey's light is on.
Sorry.
[laughing]
I won't be channeling her on this one. I also, one of the comments that I made at that AP&amp;W, as well as, is, our percentage of the debt ratio compared to other municipalities is, is really high. Many of the charts that were given, I think, confused more than, than anything about the per capita. I'm not sure that that makes a lot of, a lot of sense, but the EAV ratio is extremely important. And I think this council, different than many councils before, is making strides to reduce our debt. I think we've done a good job on the police and fire pension, and we've made a decision to not borrow as much per year, but we're still taxing and spending and borrowing and spending, and, and we need to stop. We need to live within our means. Another issue this year that was alarming for me was during the, the budget. Originally, Mr. Bob Kowitz had $500,000 from the general fund being transferred to capital improvement, and we took that out and decided to use it for other things. We need to start, continue to look seriously at our, our debt. We just can't keep getting the credit card out when, when we need something. So I will be voting against this.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Alderman Grover moved, made the amendment to 113, and I second that motion because I think that we have to look at, Mr. Lyons explained to us about our rating. And I, I'm certainly not going to be able to try and say what you said, but I think that it does affect our rating and that we are already above where we, of the hundred, of the 90,000. And so they had proposed 120 for a little cushion, but I think we were at 112, five-something. I don't have it in front of me because I just, and so that's why we went to 113, and I think that's reasonable. And I certainly hear exactly what Alderman Burris and Alderman Wilson are saying, and I think we all are committed to continue to go down. But I think we have to be realistic in, in knowing that we have a little issue here, and we need to take care of it. So I'll be voting for it.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to pass resolution amending the City of Evanston's budget policy, increasing the city's tax-supported general obligation GO debt limit from 90 million to 113 million. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Six to two.
Six to two, the motion passes. Alderman Burris?
I'm sorry?
Is that an amendment?
No. Yes, it is an amendment. A5, Ordinance 113-0-11 amending portions of Title 10, Chapter 11, traffic schedules relating to speed limits on Oakton Street. The ninth ward alderman, me, has requested the proposed Ordinance 113-0-11 by which the city council would amend Section 10-11-2, Schedule 2, to establish a 20 mile per hour speed limit on Oakton Street between Dodge Avenue and Ridge Avenue.
Just that it came up on a two-two vote.
Yeah. We, two voted for it, two voted against it, and this was brought to the council because I've become frustrated with the problems on Oakton. We've not been able to get resolution and relief. We've not been able to get resolution and relief for the many residents from basically Home Depot on Oakton all the way to Ridge. We have major truck traffic, we have speeding, and we have many, we have three schools, we have a major park, and as much as the public works they've been doing, trying to find ways to mitigate the traffic and the noise and the rumbling of the trucks that are cracking walls and windows in the houses, we've not been able to find a solution. We still have trucks, we still have speeding, we don't have the money at this point to pave Oakton from Dodge to Ridge. It's 1.7 million to do that. I understand that in the next, this year, we'll be looking at a five-year plan for paving, and I hope to have that at the, the top of the list, but that's not going to happen this year, it may not happen in 2013. I'm trying to find relief for residents along Oakton that have been experiencing problems for a very long time, and I've been working on this for two and a half years, and I'm grasping at straws to find ways to find, get some relief for these people, and we're hoping a reduced speed limit will help them.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
And I think we can all sympathize to some extent with, with that problem. I know that on Main Street and Dempster, we have essentially the same problem, although perhaps the road conditions might not be as severe as some of those stretches, and one of my reservations is that implementing this speed limit on a 24/7 basis is going to push a disproportionate amount of that problem onto the other streets that are already suffering from the same problem. And I don't see how it solves the underlying problem. The solution to the problem, of course, is to me twofold, enforcement of the speed restrictions that are in place, and taking care of the infrastructure. And clearly, that should be more of a priority than it is. And I know you've opposed certain things and allocations of, of funding, and as have I, but these are the kinds of things that should be more of a priority. And so, I can't support the, the speed limit change because it's going to push the problem onto somebody else. We're already experiencing difficulties in other areas based on the rerouting of the trucks for the truck route. For example, Main Street, trucks are not able to navigate turns off of Main Street, and there's, I believe there's been at least one accident as a, as a result of the inability to navigate those turns. So, it doesn't solve the underlying bigger problem.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Just a reminder that this is on tonight's agenda just for introduction, and so it'll come back for more discussion, I hope, in two weeks.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
That was my point as well. I just want to mention that Sherman Avenue is also a truck route, and so we share the same situation, even more so because we've got Northwestern buses running until 2:00 and 3:00 AM in the, in the morning in, through residential neighborhoods.
All right, seeing no further lights, I assume everyone is agreed that we will introduce this and discuss it in two weeks. Alderman Burris. A6, the dog.
I move suspension of the rules.
We have introduced it, but we need to suspend the rules. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
A6, Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Eight zeros.
Eight to nothing, the rules are suspended. Would you like to make a motion, Alderman Burris?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Motion to approve Ordinance 2-0-12, authorizing the sale of Evanston Police Department K-9 program dog. Recommended adoption of Ordinance 2-0-12 to authorize the sale of a K-9 program dog with the Evanston Police Department to Officer Schneinbein. Chief Eddington recommends that the ordinance be introduced and adopted on January 9th, 2011, due to the nature of the transaction.
Been moved and seconded, Alderman Fisk.
This is a really good thing, so thank you to all involved, and thank you, Chief.
And thank you to Jack for his years of service. All right, City Clerk, seeing no more lights for discussion, could you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the motion passes. Alderman Burris, you have one more.
A10. A10, Ordinance 9-0-12, amending liquor license classes H, N, and O, clarifying the prohibition on selling single containers of beer less than 40 ounces in volume, and Alderman Grover would like to talk about this.
If I may, at Committee A and PW, we didn't hear from Mr. Hall from World Market, I don't think, until after we had already voted to approve this. And knowing that it looks as if both World Market, two of our businesses in Evanston, and Whole Foods, both sell beer in these make-your-own-six-pack packages, I'm wondering if this was part of the discussion at the Liquor Commission and how the Liquor Commission felt about these kinds of packaged beers.
The whole, oh, go ahead, Alderman Grover.
And whether there was room to make allowance in the ordinance to permit just what World Market is doing.
Well, since the whole genesis of this was Whole Foods' concern about single bottle sales, which were not taking place, we certainly, the Liquor Commission sent out a staff member who did a wonderful job of trying to buy single bottles and could not, was turned down appropriately at World Market and everywhere else, so that wasn't happening. What was happening was two bottles, which was legal, were being sold together. So, I'm looking at our attorney, Mr. Farrar, for, because the intent was not to stop Whole Foods or, or anyone else from selling a six-pack, particularly one that's not cold.
And, and a six-pack of different beers. The idea behind World Market's packaging, but perhaps our proposed ordinance needs to address that.
It would be ironic to, to penalize Whole Foods when they're the ones who started this quest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Grant for our Corporation Council. The mayor is indeed correct. When the discussion was had at the Liquor Control Commission meeting, there was discussion about taping or, or taping bottles together, two bottles, three bottles. There was no discussion actually had on the, the warm beer in a cardboard six-pack. So, if the inclination of the council is to have us incorporate amendment, mandatory language to provide such, we can certainly do so, tweak the ordinance for the next go-around when it comes back for action.
I, I think that would be what the Liquor Commission would want as well. Alderman Wilson.
I know that some of the stores keep some of the beer in the cooler, so I guess I wouldn't want to restrict it just to warm. So, the, it's, I think what, what we really have are the craft beers, you know, where they, you know, you go in and you try one of each, so.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to draw the distinction between warm and cold beer.
I heard the word "warm" bounced around.
Perhaps, perhaps what I can do is, is make it clear that it's craft beer, a craft beer requirement.
Yeah, I, I just.
Beer of any kind, if it's in a six-pack.
If it's in a six-pack, then it's not, it seems to me, what we were trying to correct.
Sure. I will make the appropriate amendment, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, and that will be incorporated in language that comes before you at the next council meeting.
And I think we can have some confidence based upon staff's evaluation that all of our ordinances are being obeyed by the stores, so this is not a terrible problem.
While we're talking about it. Just, as I'm just sitting here thinking about it, you know, you just generally don't want somebody going in and buying a beer, but why not? I might not want six, I might not be that thirsty, I might just want one or two.
You go to a bar for that.
Maybe we just need to, it, it could be taxed proportionately, right? How does the taxing work?
You'd be taxed either way, but Alderman Fisk.
There are really, really good reasons for not selling a single beer, which I'd be happy to talk with Alderman Wilson.
Okay, I'll talk to you about it offline.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. All right, so Corporation and Council, you will work your magic with the language.
Yes, it can be voted for, on introduction tonight with the understanding that those amendments will be incorporated into the amendment, amended version for next council meeting for action.
It's been introduced. All right. Thank you very much. Does that conclude your report, Alderman Burris? Excellent. Alderman Holmes, Planning and Development.
I think I need to move suspension of the rules for P2.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Thank you, eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the rules are suspended.
Ordinance 7-0-12, amending Ordinance 77-0-11, 1100 Clark Street, 1719 Ridge Avenue, Plan Development. Focus Development has requested an amendment to the Plan Development approved by Ordinance 77-0-11 to allow for an extension of completion time from October 1, 2013 to October 1, 2014. Remove approval.
It's been moved and seconded, and seeing no lights for discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll on Ordinance 7-0-12?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the motion passes. I believe.
And that concludes my report.
That concludes your report, and Alderman Grover, you have no outstanding issues. All right. Then we're at call of the wards. Alderman Burris.
The next Ninth Ward meeting will be February 29th at 7:00 PM at the Levy Center, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Yes, Happy New Year to everyone. First of all, I want to thank the police chief for his gracious, being a gracious host last Friday when I took a tour of the police station and the new firing range. That was fun, I learned a lot, and he's a great teacher. I did, I shot the gun. I did. I, I don't remember what it, it was a glauxum thing. It was pretty impressive.
Okay, now I want to go on that tour, that sounds good.
Anyway, I also want to make a referral to Human Services to extend the hours for the lakefront bathrooms to dusk. There are a lot of people I heard from, especially in this warmer weather, who have been trying to use the lakefront bathrooms and have been unable to do so.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Happy New Year to everyone also. This Thursday, there will be a meeting for the Penny Park Neighbors at Perla Cafe, starting at 6:30 with myself and Chief Eddington. And the next Second Ward meeting will be February 9th at 7 o'clock at the Joseph Hill Education Center.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Madam Mayor, we're real excited in the Fifth Ward because we have some new businesses, and we'd like to invite you who have time on Friday, at noon, we will be doing a grand opening and a ribbon cutting at Ruby G's New Soul Food Kitchen at 1623 Simpson. So, that's at noon. And then if you can stay a half an hour longer, we'll move down to 1723 Simpson to the Fresh Foods Market for a grand opening and a ribbon cutting there. So, if you could join us and help us celebrate these two new businesses on Simpson Street. And then again, I'll just simply say, on January 19th, the regular ward meeting at Fleetwood at 7:00. And now we'll be having the information on the referendums, both for the electricity and the township, and we'll also be discussing lighting at the Civic Center.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going, I refer to the, our Human Services Committee, a request for an ordinance to ban the non-emergency use of all personal portable electronic devices while driving, following the recommendation of the National Transportation Safety Board in December. Evanston ordinance already bans handheld devices. The state of Illinois bans all texting and all cellphone use, hands-free and handheld, for school bus drivers and drivers younger than 17 years old. And I'm looking to extend that ban to all drivers in Evanston and all handheld devices. I hope we can agree that operating a cellphone is incompatible with safe driving, and in the dense urban setting that is Evanston, with no long stretches of open road, except for perhaps Oakton and West Central Street. But rather, we have many schools, commuters walking to train stations, pedestrians and cyclists. The total ban, I hope you'll find, makes sense. It would simply ask motorists to operate just their car when they're behind the wheel, and not an iPad or a cellphone, or a smartphone. We shouldn't text, call, drink alcohol, or travel unbuckled. Our, our discussion, I hope, about a total ban will include expertise and resources, and if you attended the Distracted Driving Summit in April, you'll find it very repetitive. I'm hoping to bring back a lot of the people who served on the panel discussions of the Distracted Driving Summit to help us understand and answer some of those, those impertinent questions, such as, what is the difference between cognitive impairment between a conversation you have with a passenger and one that you have on a telephone with someone while you're driving? And how not operating a phone in a car at the same time might, or might affect or even improve your product, your work productivity. You don't really, in, in a city like Evanston, where you are four or five miles to anywhere you want to go, it doesn't make sense that your business is so urgent on the phone that it can't wait for that amount of time to get to your destination, or to pull over and stop to have a conversation. So, I'm hoping this will come before Human Services, some kind of ordinance in February, at our February meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grover. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Fisk.
I just really want, well, first thank the city staff. Over the holiday weekend, the Evanston Plaza was sold, and the news was first reported in the Evanston Now, and then later in the Evanston Roundtable. So, I just want to first thank the city staff, particularly Economic Development, for the role that they played in that. Our first meeting with the neighbors is going to be January 23rd, so we'll be meeting with both business associations to introduce the gentleman from the Bonnie Management Corporation. And then we will meet, neighbors will have an opportunity to meet them and ask what questions they have, and, and hear the vision for them all at that February 9th meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was just going to suggest that you might announce the upcoming ribbon cuttings that you're having. I think there's one this week at Fred Amaje.
I would have to, I would have to get my calendar and look to.
Yeah, in, in the face of the several closings that, in the face of, of the several, several closings of businesses, I think it would be helpful also to know that, as Alderman Holmes was saying, there are new businesses that are opening as well, and you're gracious enough to be present at those and for the ribbon cuttings.
I can promise you that I am doing at least three ribbon cuttings this week. I cannot, however Alderman Fisk tell you, exactly the day. I cannot, however Alderman Fisk tell you exactly the dates, and.
Well, on the twelfth, I think it's Pret a Manger on Sherman Avenue.
I believe you. All right, on the twelfth, I will be cutting a ribbon at Pret a Manger, which is opening, and Alderman Fisk is correct, we do have businesses opening constantly. Alderman Rainey slash Burris?
Actually, one more, Clotter Cutlery opened on Main Street today, so that's pretty exciting as well, I forgot to mention that.
Thank you. All right, Alderman Wilson, do you, oh, and congratulations, everybody, it is nine forty-two, and we are about to go into executive session, but that still is doing very well for the new year.
And pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, one twenty slash two A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate litigation in minutes. These agenda items are permanent subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS one twenty slash two A, C five, C six, C eleven, and C twenty-one.
Been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero.
Meeting ended at.
The motion passed.
Nine forty-two.
I expect this to be more important. I got a loofah.